Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, of power and glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
Let lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from January 20th, 2020. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D is citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council with anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please do so now. Seeing none, we'll move on to item E, reports from council committees. E1 Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on January 27th, 2020, due to lack of agenda items. And item E2 Safety and Human Resources Committee met on January 27th, 2020. Dan?
Yeah, Mr. President, at that time, we recommended 50% reciprocity tax credit in lieu of crash fees or SAFER grant to be brought before the floor council for discussion tonight.
Okay, thank you. We will discuss those later on. And moving on to item E3 is Technology Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items. Item G Introduction of Ordinances and Resolutions. Resolution number 002-20, a resolution designating Lori Sinclair as delegate to represent the city of Napoleon, Ohio, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Ohio Municipal Electric Association, and declaring an emergency. Motion. Second.
Thank you.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is just to make it official. I think council had approved it under Discussion Action once before, but they do need legislation for this. And I didn't know if you wanted to do suspension of the rules to make it official so that Lori could be the official representative and attend the meetings, which you already have been doing, so.
And this is replacing Travis Schaefer, who left back in October, so it's kind of been vacant since, I don't know where, I guess it was November 1st?
Correct.
We have a motion for suspension.
So moved. Second.
Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori, you want me to veto?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to veto?
No.
Okay.
Not that important, but it really isn't necessary to suspend. Going forward either way, but.
Any other questions? Okay, Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
That has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item G2 Resolution Number 003-20, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 for the purpose of implementation of a GIS system to the sole source said implementation to Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Move.
Second. Joel?
Thank you. This is a continuation of the updates to our GIS system. This has been an ongoing project over the past few years. And the past two years was really ramped up. This is actually a lesser amount that we budgeted for this year. And I think it's, we're in year three, we'll go into year four next year. Stan Tech houses our GIS system right now, and hence the sole source portion of it. And with these updates, we'll be able to implement some other programs, enhance our utility, actually all city services. I think now the people in the field are using the tablets. They're able to do locates a lot easier using this technology. So it's really working out well, and just got a little ways to go to finish it up, so.
Chad, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Nothing specific, other than we're working on getting ourselves to do it ourselves. The purchase requisition was actually turned into data by that software. But Stan Tech's helping us move towards that, helping my staff with the appropriate training. So it's an ongoing process, and we may continue in the future to need assistance, outside assistance, just due to small staff levels. But we've been annually ramping down the cost for the external assistance on this. But we are putting it into more departments, including cemeteries recently. We were able to log all their information. Water's using the field sewer. We're even hoping to get to the point where my construction inspectors can use it in real time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
And we'll move on to second read. Item G3 is Resolution Number 004-20, a resolution authorizing the participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. As you can see from your council packet in the ODOT, this is to use the ODOT state purchasing contract for crack ceiling. Chad, is there anything we need to add to that, or?
The only thing I would add, the program is an annual program. However, for this specific item, the 2019 pricing is still in effect until April 1st. We're trying to get this through before the new pricing gets released. We haven't heard what they are, but the current contract holder told us they're going up. So we're just trying to get in before April 1st for the 2019 price.
Thanks.
How soon would you need to have this passed in order to actually buy what you want to buy?
As far as suspension, it's not something that would be completely necessary. We'll still make the deadline if today's the 3rd, the 10th, or 3/17.
And March 2nd.
2nd.
March 2nd.
We'd be fine with that. It's just, if you suspended it, it would just be a housekeeping issue. So it's up to you whatever.
Okay. Yes, if anything changes, which I'm sure they're not going to change the date, but if something changes in the next read or the third, obviously 3rd would be too late, but. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Moving on to item H, second reads of ordinances and resolutions. H1 is ordinance number 001-20, an ordinance amending the current investment policy in and for the city of Napoleon, Ohio. Investment policy number IP 16-0003, amending ordinance number 013-16, and policy number 0002, and was periodically amended. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel? Kelly?
Thank you. The changes were highlighted in your packet. It's for the ORC changes and a few housekeeping items. And other than that, there's nothing new to report.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, that will move on. Tonight, we have no third reads. We'll move on to item J, the good of the city. J1 is Discussion or Action, Approval of Plans and Specifications for the East and West Graceway Drive Street Improvements. Joel?
Thank you. Let's try this again. This is the plans and specs for Graceway, and just allowing us to bid it out. Engineer's estimate is $465. Chad, did that change from last year?
No, it was still $465.
Okay. That's it.
Is there anything you need from us today?
Just approval, so that we can advertise the bid.
So we don't need a question? All right. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
That's an approved. Item J2 Discussion or Action, Approved Recommendations. The new swimming pool Aquatic Center Commission approved the footprint of the main play feature of the Napoleon Aquatic Center. Joel?
Thank you. The pool commission met January 29th. The main discussion focused around the play features. And we're at a point now, at least with the design portion of this, that we have to start locking in some of these features just to, so we can stay on schedule. And the footprint of the main play structure was important because of the location of where they have to put all these spray nozzles and pumps and everything. So the only thing, and we say the footprint because, let's scroll down to the picture here. Some of these play structures, we're still trying to get an answer on, you know, what exactly they are, what they look like, and those could change a little bit. But once we get those answers, the pool commission will meet again, discuss them. But for the most part, this layout, that this footprint is going to stay, that's going to stay the same. Other than that, Tony, do you have anything else that you wanted to add to this?
Just to add is the importance of approving a footprint, which is basically the foundation of the structure, is like Joel was explaining. It helps the engineers to continue on with the plan as far as the contour or getting the depth of not only the zero entry area, but as you move back towards the slides and into the competition area. So that's important because that structure has to sit on flat, not that slow ground, unless you want to have it even more customized. So that's why it's important for us to lock that in. And also, as Joel mentioned, I'm working with the supplier of this type of product, and he is ensuring me that I should have a lot more information actually this coming week as far as some of the features within that structure, whether or not they're interchangeable, which is something that the commission wanted to know in case they want to switch a few things out. So we're going to continue to tweak that, you know, as we move forward.
Thanks. Councilman Myers, did you want to add anything to that meeting?
No.
Any other questions?
How much of that comes down for the winter months?
Ooh, I don't know. How much comes down for the winter?
Good question.
It's a good question, I don't know. It's a question I can ask. My guess is not much.
Okay.
Maybe the bucket?
Possibly that bucket. Certainly wouldn't want to.
Bucket will be dumping snow?
Yeah, it'll be something that we'll definitely have to find out about at the winterization app, not just that, but all of it.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have the motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deppo?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
An approved. Item J3 Discussion or Action on a 50% reciprocity income tax credit. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. And Councilman Bear, what I was going to do is just go over, you know, being the chair of the committee, I was just going to go over the, and for rest of council, was just going to go over the report that was, was not in your, this week's packet, it was in the previous week's packet. And there was a 15-page report that was put together, essentially just kind of going over what we had discussed previously in regard to staffing levels at the fire department, and the options that were put forward to help resolve some of the issues due to, related to the increased number of calls, and the, also the increased number of overlapping calls, and putting together kind of a statistical analysis of what's happening over the past, over a decade now. So in that, we just kind of highlighted a lot of the main points, and then just opened it up for questions. If that's okay with everybody, we'll just do the same thing. Chief and Chief O'Brien and Chief Mack are here to answer questions. And then, of course, you know, Kelly and Billy and I all have had some input in this. But, you know, like we discussed during the budget time, and in previous meetings, we talked about the staffing levels at the fire department, and our increased call volumes. And if you look at page, let me just pull it up real quick, pardon me. Scroll down to this section. So we've had an increased number of calls since 2008. Every single year, the calls have gone up. Except between 2009 and 10, they stayed flat. They stayed the same. But every year, they've gone up and up and up and up. And this is something that, I mean, at least for the past two years, Chief O'Brien and I have been kind of talking about and kind of monitoring our call volumes and number of overlapping calls, so. And just, you know, getting to this point, I guess. We also talked about the number of volunteers that we have, and how difficult it is for us to recruit volunteers as a part of our staff at the fire department. So one of the items that we brought up was, you know, implementing a vehicle crash fee as a way to improve revenues so that we would be able to hire staffing levels, another staff person. And let me just describe real quick. We have three full-time people on A shift and C shift, but on B shift, we only have two full-time people staff right now. And that's, you know, that what we were looking at, maybe hiring that last full-time person. And just, we're trying to figure out ways to improve our revenues so that we can try to address the staffing level issue. So that was proposed, and also writing a SAFER grant. You know, I forgot what SAFER actually stands for, Staffing Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. So the SAFER grant would actually pay for us to hire employees, but the first two years, it pays for 75% of the cost. The third year, it pays for 65%, and then the fourth year, the city is responsible for funding the rest. And we had proposed hiring four new fire, full-time firefighters. And we have to do it that way because the grant requires it, and requires that staffing level to be at a certain number, to meet a certain NFPA standard, is it? So we have to meet a certain level, a certain standard. And that would require four full-time firefighters. Well, not only were there concerns raised about the sustainability of that, because obviously, the city would have to pay for all of the staff at the end of three years, starting the fourth year. But also, we felt that it would erode away at the volunteer structure that we have now that's already difficult to maintain. So we went back to the drawing board and looked at other options. And really, the other option was to, well, if we're, you know, trying to solve one problem, you know, what else is out there? And I know we've discussed in the past, at least in part, maybe not in as much detail as we needed to at the time, but addressing the staffing levels in the dispatch center as well. And I know there was a position that was cut in 2014, was it, Chief? 2014. And, you know, since then, Chief has some data now that we can, he can speak to in a little bit here, but that has caused a lot of, I would say, a lot of stress for the employees that work in that area. Not just on the dispatchers, but also on the patrolman side as well, in terms of covering when nobody's available. So, you know, go through, I don't know if everybody has the report in front of them. So, you know, if I'm scrolling through and you want to stop me on something, feel free to. But just to go over the overlapping calls portion, you can see from this graph that the number of overlapping calls has actually gone up. The total number of volunteers has gone down. And then the number of full-time firefighters has stayed level. So, but overall, it's about a 60% increase in the number of calls of service since 2008. We're up to 1,646 calls, up from 1,036 in 2008. We're also seeing, you know, it's, the age of the patients that our staff goes and runs to has gone up. So just, you know, here's another graph showing the statistics of, you know, the Napoleons average compared to the US average and the age in the population. So this kind of shows where we're at, where we have, you know, statistically, we have an older population. And here's the patient age breakdown. Chief, is this by run, by number of runs?
Yeah.
Okay. So not to, you know, rehash all this, just wanted to put that, those statistics back out there, because I know we've discussed it, so I don't want to dwell on it too much. I'll take a pause right now, right here, see if anybody has any questions on this right now, and then if not, or if we get through those, then I would ask the Chief Mack explain a little bit further on the police department dispatch center staffing levels. So are there any questions on the number of calls for service for the fire department?
I don't really have a question on the number of calls, just the number of volunteers. What's the reason for the drop? I know you said recruiting is definitely an issue, but.
So what we think the reason is, is that it's not just in Napoleon. So it's a national thing. So the National Volunteer Fire Council has looked at this as a big study. The drop in volunteers all across the United States is something that's been drastically low. And what they point to is two-income families now. So you don't really have that individual that can actually volunteer, like when my dad did. And you have a little bit higher cost in housing. So people are having to pay bills, and then just the time commitments that it's changed. So the time commitments back when you used to only have to do a 36-hour fire class and be a firefighter, compared to now, you're spending 120 hours just to get the fire card, and then you're spending another, about 160 hours to get the EMT card, but then it's the continuing education. So the continuing education on top of that, all the time, it just begins to add up. So each one of those certifications have its own amount of continuing education. So the fire card has its own amount, the EMT card has, but a lot of other ones have multiple certifications. You know, you may have your instructor card, inspector card, and all the other ones that go along with it. So all those things just add up. So I think it's a lot to do at the time. We've tried to, we've tried a lot of different approaches at our fire department, trying a little bit more of a hybrid approach here lately with just the way we conduct the training. So fire training is really something that has got to be hands-on. It's, that builds the camaraderie, builds the rapport between the members, and then we know what we're doing together. EMS gives us the option that we might be able to provide the lecture piece at home through the computer, and then maybe just, you know, step in on a monthly basis for maybe an hour. Here recently, in 2020, we just rolled out this new platform that we're hoping to move the skills piece for the EMS to maybe once a quarter. I am cautious about that, though, in some pieces, because I think, you know, if you're facing in the fire department, it's hard to build reports with people, you know, and have relationships with each other. So when people show up, that we can actually all work together. But it's really just trying to do a balancing act between the on-call and that. So, yeah, we're trying hard, but at the end of the day, Assistant Chief Wright works with a lot of individuals upfront. So he'll get a lot of calls about what it is to be in the fire department, or what's the time commitments. Well, because I had showed you it takes $9,830 to put somebody on, we can't just hire just everybody. So we ask that they come up, fill out the application, and then go through like a ride-along and be around the fire station and make sure that that's really what they want. Because it's an investment for them, but it's also a big investment for us, too. So we want to make sure that we're both in it together. And we've had some great success with some here lately. I mean, we've got a couple in EMT school, a couple that just finished fire school. And so, you know, it's just, it's a long-term, you know, commitment on both ends. It's about how much we get in the return afterwards. So when those calls come in, you know, 32% is about what they're responding to, or 32 calls, 2%, I'm sorry, 2%, it's about 32 calls a year. So that, out of the 1,600, that they may be there for. And why that is, is because they do work at other jobs. And every employer in Napoleon's hurting for workers, and just as well as we are. So they can't afford to allow their people to leave their place of business to be able to come on a call. So that's been more of a challenge, too, so.
Chief, if a, if you have a person that wants to be a volunteer fire, fire for Napoleon, and they, they're already working at another fire station.
Yep.
Now, whatever training they already have, does that carry over?
Yeah, it does. So it's a state card, so we wouldn't have to send them through it. So that's why you would see like a, it looks like a sharp decrease of all, but those are not all local responders, you know. So when we talk about part-time individuals or that, you know, because we don't have any per se volunteers, but what I say our department is three-tier, and that's a full-time, and then that permanent part-time, which are a lot of the part-timers that don't even live in Napoleon, but are hired to just pretty, to work shift. And then you have the local responders. And so if they, if they already have a card, if they live outside of Napoleon, we will not pay for the training. They have to come to us with Fire One EMT Basic. If they live inside Napoleon and are willing to be that local first responder, then that's when we will pick up the training. So that's why we'll send them to school, the fire school, EMT school.
But if they already have the training?
If they already have it, then they don't, then we don't have to send them again. Correct.
And then?
They still have to do the continuing education, though, on an annual basis. That never stops. So even for me today, I mean, I still have to maintain all my cards and all the certifications that I have with all the continuing education.
And if they're doing the continuing ed at another department, then they're not required to do it again here, right?
No, that's not necessarily, because a lot of fire departments do do a lot of things completely different. With the amounts of staffing that they have, or the types of tools and apparatus and trucks, the way that we respond to a fire, or the way that we respond to an EMS call. So we do, we do have what we call the Napoleon Way. I mean, we have to make what we have, what our resources are available to us compared to what hazards we're protecting, is completely different than another community. So the training still is some sort of, you know, a basic training, but it's more geared towards how it is in Napoleon. So, yeah, there is a training requirement for us in Napoleon. Now, our training requirement, I can tell you, is less than what Ridgeville Fire Department offers. You know, they require a little bit more training than us. We require the, what we call the 75% rule. So that means that you just got to attend 75% of the training, which means that it's nine months out of the year. And nine months out of the year, you're coming to a two-hour fire training and a one-hour EMS, because you can do the other hour of EMS at home right now. And most of the time, a lot of the members, if they're, the And most of the time, a lot of the members, if they're the local first responder, they'll, they'll be coming in. Most of the other members are getting it while they're already on shift. So, it's not like they're coming in on an extra, you know, basis on another call, or on another day or whatever. But, uh, but the individuals that do live, you know, locally and say they have a full-time job, yeah, they would have to come in. We, and we try to accommodate that, too. So, we do, um, we do a Tuesday night training at 7:00 PM, and we do the exact same training at Thursday at, um, 1:00 PM, and Saturday morning at 9:00 AM. And then, starting January 1st, now what we've, we've even expanded that now. So, the shift captain or the officer of the day has to send it out on our, in our internal communication, just to say what time they're going to be doing training that day. So, then that way, a member can show up any day that works for them, it does not matter, and that training will count towards it.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Chief, do you want to talk about the dispatching, dispatch center?
Thank you, everyone. Just a little bit as far as the history on it. I tried, when I was asked to kind of give us some stats and see where things were going, you know, one of the things I explained to Joel is every time that fire gets a call, that has to go through my dispatch center. So, when he's seeing that, that rise in calls, my dispatch center's seen that rise for calls, and it doesn't always click into a numbered category for us. You know, we might get phone calls, things like that for them. So, I took kind of the same number of statistics, and, um, we had five dispatchers back in 2001, and between 2001 and '06, our call volume went up 30% in the city, uh, as far as police. So, right about that time, 3,000 calls, was when Chief Weitzel then asked for a sixth dispatcher, which we had all the way up until 2012. From '08 to current, we also went up another 40% from that number, uh, which is another 4,000 calls. So, since that sixth dispatcher was needed, we went up 7,000 calls a year, concept, conceptually. As far as, uh, you know, back in '12, we had that, uh, that audit done by the state, and that's when things started being a little uncertain for my employees at the time, my coworkers, a lot of, we had about five, just over five years of experience roughly, if you average all six of my dispatchers out. Now, some of those dispatchers had 20 years on, type of thing, and I had a couple that had a couple months on, but we're down to underneath 12, or 20 months at this point, because of that. When 2012 happened, and 2013, we started discussing it in this room, as to what was going to happen in dispatch, most of my employees started looking for else, work elsewhere. At that point, I saw a mass exodus of seniority, to the point that we lost, um, it's in the report, something like, uh, I'll find it.
67 years.
67 years of experience since 2012 in dispatchers. That's a significant amount and a very critical point of, uh, control for our city and our safety services. It was part of a restructure, so, you know, 2012, 2013 happened, '14 was the vote, 15 and 16, we didn't fill it. Chief Weitzel didn't fill that position, and 16, that position was voted away as part of a restructure, um, with the law office and the front desk. So, we had it in the budget for a couple of years, and we just didn't fill it to try and help us through those years. Since that time, and I don't know if anyone could have seen kind of how that would affect my department, and so, there's a lot of unintended consequences with that. The way I look at it is with six dispatchers, we're in the green on a speedometer, with five, which is what we've been running with, we're in the yellow area, maybe maybe. As soon as we lose one dispatcher for any reason, now, right now, I have all females, so a pregnancy, a sick leave, a baby, a child, we're down to four dispatchers. I'm always going to lose an employee at some point, we always do, and that puts us down to four dispatchers immediately. That has some drastic effects on my department. We've had, out of, uh, since, since that happened in 2016, we had a significant amount of turnover, multiple 12-hour shifts, you know, overtime's nice sometimes, but not always, especially when it's being forced, and I, you know, I've got some numbers for that. Last year, the worst thing that I can say for a boss that I can do, the time off, is actually cancel time off. Our contract allows our employees to submit time off up to a year in advance. So, basically, this November, they're putting in for next December, they have that option. This year, at the holidays, I had to cancel time off after posting it multiple times, and no one being able to work it, that's been locked in for better part of a year at the holidays. That's, that's challenging for, um, a manager to try and look at an employee on that. Some other things that happened. In 2015, uh, we were in a situation where we're not medically certified as a dispatch center, which means we didn't give like CPR and things like that, we just took calls. We had five officers that were certified then in dispatch, uh, that would kind of come in, and, you know, we all wanted this thing to go, we all wanted this thing to work, so we were all working dispatch. When they wanted time off and didn't want to pick up the overtime, we would pick up the slack on that. Since that's happened, when I took, came on, there's a state law that mandates that we're medical dispatch now, so we have to go through quite a bit of extra training and sit up there, and I've only got two employees. Those two employees last year alone, that are in the Patrol Division, carried 166 hours of dispatch time alone. That's not including the patrol time, that's just 166 hours of overtime that they covered in the dispatch center to try and help our employees out to get the time off that they wanted. I canceled eight days off last year. I probably could have tripled that or quadrupled that number, had I not had that 166 covered by the con, by our uniform patrol. Now, the challenge there is, for us to understand, is my staffing is two to three people on the road. So, if one of those people is coming in early to work dispatch, they're now not available on the road should I need road patrol overtime. So, you're leaving that overtime maybe to a higher price, and the other thing with that is patrol, you're paying patrol wages. So, if that's a supervisor, you're paying supervisor time and a half, patrol time and a half versus a dispatcher time and a half for that. In your page seven, there's a chart that kind of shows us some of the impacts I talked about, uh, right there. You know, with six dispatchers, our, the schedule we currently work under has been in place for a long, long time, zero overtime. This is before any discretionary times approved. As soon as we go down to five, which is where we've been operating theoretically since 2013, uh, there's 100, before I approve a single day off for anyone, I've got 120 hours of overtime I've got to cover in a year. Okay? And that's not including vacations and all that. Now, as I said, we're always hiring one. We're getting less than, less than two years out of an employee right now, primarily because of scheduling, just to be brutally honest, it's the scheduling, the overtime. Uh, we go from, if we had to cover with four dispatchers for the entire year, that number goes 960. So, no matter how many months you figure that out, 120 hours to 960 is a significant jump. And that's where, as soon as we go from a five dispatcher to a four, we're in the red immediately, to a point where we might, it, it's challenging to even have someone cover that. And, uh, that has meant, um, serious looks at 16-hour shifts and things like that for us. So, is there any questions on that piece before I go any farther? I don't want to spew a bunch of information. 67 years of experience. You know, bottom line is, it's had a lot of, you know, unplanned expenses, or unplanned consequences on us, and I, I did a few numbers just briefly, um, to kind of, and it's not, this isn't a total number, but, you know, when asked, how many weeks are they actually working 12s and things like that? You know, we're covering, last year, our dispatch center had 120, of the dispatchers that are still here, 128 12-hour shifts were mandated or issued to them. So, some of those are signed up, some of those are, hey, I signed up because I wanted someone to get a day off, but it's, you know, type of thing, but 128 shifts. Out of that, um, every one of them had multiple weeks, some up to seven years, or seven weeks, had more than two 12-hour shifts in a week. On, on top of that, you know, they'd have six, seven, eight weeks where they canceled one of their days off on their normal two-day off to work a shift for somebody. So, we're getting significant burnout, uh, that's happening, and that, you know, you go back two years, and I've got dispatch, I have one dispatcher that's still here that worked 56 12-hour shifts two years ago. 56 12-hour shifts is a lot of overtime for anyone. On top of that, she worked 15 weeks where she had multiple, two, at least two plus 12-hour shifts in, in a week, and then, uh, you know, days off, type of thing. So, that's kind of been the consequences for our department, that's happened over the years, over the, you know, the last half a dozen years. So, that's kind of where my, where I'm at on that. You know, it's, it's a drastic impact on our department with five dispatchers. Is there any questions I can answer, or anything that's making sense?
Chief, do you know how much money you spent on overtime for dispatchers in 2019?
We do have that, I don't have it with me, to be honest, Mayor, but yes, in the end...
Because then, because if we're, if we're, we're eliminating overtime with a sixth dispatcher? We're not hiring somebody brand-new, right out of the batch?
Right.
Paying them overtime plus, where overtime is now basically down to zero, and most of that overtime money is now going to a sixth person, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
So, it's not adding a sixth dispatcher with current expenses, that there's, there's a gap in there someplace.
Yes, sir.
And then, and with better employee retention, you're going to have theoretically, and hopefully, you have more experienced employees, last a lot longer.
I understand, right. I'm just saying, what's the delta, right? Because it's not current expense plus six dispatcher.
No.
It's current expense plus six dispatcher, it's not, it's not the same.
They're not equals.
Right.
Yeah, and what I can 100% tell you is that we're not over the cost of an employee with overtime. The challenge I'm having is, is the seniority in keeping employees. You know, uh, we've hired 16 employees since 2008 in dispatch center. Between eight and 12, we hired two dispatchers. We had six dispatchers that whole time, we hired two people. Between 2012, when the audit happened and, and job security became an issue in my agency, and now, I've hired, between Chief Weitzel and I, myself, we've hired 14 dispatchers since 2012.
It'd be interesting to see what the delta is, though.
Yes.
Do we have an idea of what the actual cost of the sixth dispatcher is compared to current number?
Right, yeah. I don't know if you, do you have any of that information, Kelly, or not? Yeah, I, I do know we have it, I just didn't...
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. I'm not trying to sharpshoot, I'm just asking.
No, no, I, I totally understand that.
I shouldn't say sharpshoot to policemen, should I?
Anything else I can try and answer for anyone? Thank you for your time, honestly, sir.
Do you know how many other communities our size maintain a dispatch?
Maintain a dispatch?
Have a dispatch like we do?
Yeah, um, how many? I'd have to get a number for you. I can say locally, many of them. Now, Lucas County just voted to, um, go to a consolidated dispatch.
Right. And we're not doing that, we're keeping a dispatch. Voters voted on it, that's what we're doing.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
They're in a very different situation. I can tell you, um, Wausau went to the sheriff's office for a period of time, and they're trying to bring that dispatch back.
Okay.
Defiance is, you know, Defiance and Williams County have a different situation where they're consolidated over there.
Okay.
Type of thing. Which makes sense to some agencies, but not necessarily the situation we're in here. It's very different when you're Toledo and you've got 30, 30 agencies in a small area that you're trying to coordinate.
Right.
So...
And I'm not saying, I'm not doing away with dispatch in any way, shape, or form, I'm just asking the question, how, how do other communities do it? Basically, all I want to know, right?
Yes.
So...
Fulton County, for the most part, Fulton County goes through Fulton County, Defiance goes through Defiance County. They have City Dispatch and Defiance County together, in the same room, but they're, they're employed by both agencies. Williams County has Williams County Central, which is a whole different beast, that's their own entity.
Okay.
And then they dispatch for all the different agencies in there.
Okay.
The only other thing I could point out is, you know, back in '12, we had traditionally, most of the shifts would have two dispatchers. Well, that's key between Chief O'Brien and myself, is when he gets an incident, you know, and we've got several that are overlapping incidents now, what's not in that number is our law enforcement incidents that are overlapping his incidents. Um, that's being handled by one person, for the most part, right now. When we had a split-night, split-day shift dispatcher, you could assign one dispatcher to fire an EMS when you had a critical incident pop, or a couple squad calls pop, you can say, you're handling all the emergency traffic, I'll handle the police traffic. That's now being handled by one employee, which is not even correlated into the 12-hour shift, but it's that stress level that they're dealing with while they're in that seat. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, that gets us into the, um, the solution to address multiple issues, and the, and the thought process is that, um, you know, what other issues are out there? We were talking about the fire staffing, we had previously talked about police dispatch, and, uh, thinking of different solutions. The idea was to eliminate 50% of the reciprocity income tax credit that's offered right now to residents. And, uh, since it is income tax, the other portion that gets, portioned out with the income tax split would go into the, into the capital fund side, um, basically into, into road projects. And then, anything that would be left over would go into the, uh, operating reserve. So, um, going through, let me get down to, uh, what exactly this, this would do. So, 50% reciprocity credit would essentially allow us to hire one full-time firefighter, paramedic, uh, they would go on the B shift, and that would be three full-timers per shift, A, B, and C. Hire a part-timer, um, on the night shift, because right now, part-timers are only working on the day shifts unless, unless they come in for calls at night. This would allow us to, uh, staff another part-timer overnight, essentially having four people on shift at any one time. Hire one full-time dispatcher, um, and then the remaining would go to, uh, capital improvement funds, and then any additional from the operating side would go into lessen the gap between, projected revenues and, and proposed operating budget. So, as we talked, you know, the reciprocity, as everybody is familiar with reciprocity and how it works, I don't think we needed to go over that again. So, um, basically, here's, here's the fun breakdown. Might have to zoom out a little bit, too. Set at the bottom, uh, there we go, yes. I don't know, can anybody?
Nope.
Can anybody read that?
No.
I'll just go, uh, one by one here. So, at the top, um, Kelly, help me out. Still, still tough?
No, it's much better.
It's better.
Better or worse?
It's better.
You're a tomatised people.
So... Basically, the, um, let's, let's just stick with the, if we could for, for now, stick with the, uh, 62, 38% income tax split between capital and operating. So, for today's values, 243,000 would go into the, the operating side, 149,000 would go into the capital side. So, using these numbers as our benchmark, scrolling down to the first, you know, cost of a one full-time firefighter in the first year, um, you know, Kelly's split out all the different costs included in, in hiring somebody at this level, first year, uh, starting salary, or starting wages, uh, equates to about a $40,000 per year cost. Almost 10,000 of that goes into pension, you know, and on down, health insurance, um, depending on what kind of plan they have, of course. So, in the end, uh, we're looking at about a $72,600 cost for the first year, and then it goes up essentially with, you know, adding in the insurance cost going up, plus the, each step increase going up 7.25% for each step. And that's just the fourth year, we just stopped at the fourth year. There's a, actually, an F-step for firefighters, so, uh, the F-step would be, you know, this, obviously, the sixth step, so, but we just projected out for four years for now, um, and what it costs to hire an employee and, and carry the cost of, of an employee. So, uh, that's the firefighter portion, the part-time...
Why is a part-time firefighter more expensive than the full-time firefighter?
Well, um, depends on how much...
It's because initially, the firefighter, paramedic, it's, that's their starting wage, but this is, we're talking about 12 hours every single day.
12 hours. It's the 12 hours.
365. So, the full-time firefighters are at 2,600 hours a year, is what it is, so it's a different hourly for the whole course of the year.
So, um, and then it just, you know, it goes up with, you know, marginally, every year, not as much, because they don't get step increases, but, um... But if council passes non-bargaining raises, then their raises go up with.
Yeah, because essentially, you're paying, you're paying 4,380 hours instead of the 2,600 hours that you're paying for a full-time.
And there's no healthcare on them?
Correct. Then, the dispatcher, same thing, just different, different wages. So we also have an F-step for patrolmen and dispatchers. So, we only went out four years, could go out six years. But these are the step increases.
And the goal of the F-step, we're also supposed to try and get employee retention, but I currently only have one person that has to have, so.
There would be a reimbursement from the townships as well, as a part of this, that we cover, so that's factored into this. So that would actually be revenue coming in. So if you subtract that out, the total cost would be, you know, just for the employee side, in the fourth year, 210,000. And then the remaining balance would go into the general fund operating. And then, as it projects out in the next two years, obviously, that'll go down, and then the employee number will go up. It's a lot of information condensed into one sheet here, does anybody?
The hypothetically, if we had another firefighter, we could do additional non-emergency run. And that's not reflected in those numbers. And nor is the six dispatcher, just full-time without the overtime in there, right? Chief O'Brien, I asked Chief Mack this question about dispatch. How are other firefighting groups organized, staffed? What size do they represent? I know that's, I know that's, same thing, it's an off-the-wall question, but.
We got it for you.
Yeah, we, we did, we did, we, we had a lot of that information already, too, so. You know, just doing comparisons when we look at, you know, when we negotiate contract negotiations and just kind of do, you know, comparisons to how we operate compared to how other people operate. Basically, this is the, this is the chart that we, we came up with, that kind of shows just the different departments and their staffing levels. So, column C is the full-time firefighters, part-timers that they have, how many stations they have. Some of them are fire-only, so if you look at Brian, Brian only does 451 runs, but it's fire-only. And then they, oops, I got the, I put the old one on here, not the new one. EMS and fire combination, so. You know, a lot of these, just like the police departments and fire departments and water departments and whatever else, it's hard to compare other cities because everybody does it differently. So, and, and like Chief O'Brien said earlier, the makeup of the department is based on the need of the, of the community, too. So, you know, you could get a, you know, a populate, somebody with a population that's similar to Napoleon's, but, you know, you could wind up with, you know, we have a higher daytime population. And that's something we haven't really talked about, but not only is the patient age going up, but our daytime population is, is gone up because of the increase in business activity, so.
And we put the population there for, you know, that's just the city of Napoleon, but actually, the fire department covers just, just shy of 12,000 people. We were trying to give some accurate comparable data there, so, but we didn't, we weren't sure when we were gathering some of that information if it was encompassing the entire fire department coverage area for the other fire departments.
Probably not.
But, you know, for Napoleon, we cover 53 square miles, which incorporate, you know, it's had, it's 12,000 people. That's just the normal, but as Joel said, to daytime population, working, that's, that's okay.
It's gotta be different, because I'm guessing the Van Wert Fire Station does not just do the city limits of Van Wert. I'm assuming they go outside, just like we go outside.
But what I thought was interesting about Van Wert is that we tried to look for a constant. And what constant, because the fire departments are so much different, the only constant we could really kind of come close to is, okay, run volume, you know?
Right.
And if we're close to run volume at Van Wert, being that they're similar in census there, but 1,800 runs is only a couple hundred more, but quite a bit different in the staffing.
It's, it's quite proportional.
Yeah.
Without doing the mental math, it's probably pretty proportional.
Mary, I'm trying to answer your question.
Yeah.
As we were talking, there was a number in that audit in 2012 that was around that five number.
Yeah.
However, when I did some, I had one of my dispatchers do some calls this year. It was not necessarily an apples-to-apples, if you would.
Right.
What Joel just said, there were some, I think they named three, like jurisdictions, that gave us that personnel range.
Right.
And one of them did exactly what we did.
What we do, understand, understand, yep.
That was something I, I wanted to clarify.
No, I, no, yep. Because when that performance audit came in, that's one of the things they had to figure out, is
Yeah.
how do we operate versus how do other people operate, and how do you find efficiencies in it, so.
Right.
Now look at Wasean, you know, and the way departments are funded even are way different. So, Fulton County has a countywide EMS structure where the county, it's, it's based off property tax, countywide. Pays for all the different department EMS service throughout the county. So each, each department gets their, you know, their coverage area, might not just be Wasean, but Wasean and their surrounding area. So, you know, they've got a, you know, higher run volume, significantly different staff structure, a little bit lower population, but the coverage area might be different. They're funded through a countywide EMS.
Right.
Structure, which we don't have in Hendrick County, so it's much different. So does that?
It's a lot, it's a lot of information.
It is. So is that okay, moving on?
Yes.
Okay. The next chart here, the ones that are in yellow have some type of reciprocity payment to them, the cities with reciprocity payment to them. The ones that aren't highlighted are the ones that have 100% credit. And then it has their income tax rate, try to keep it to the most basic information that we could look at and compare to. So, you know, I go to, you know, the city of Oregon, 2.25% income tax, 100% reciprocity to credit. You know, Oregon is, is doing very well, and it's, it's hard to compare that, but it's, I'd use that as the example, 100%, but their income tax rate is a little higher. Not really sure if you had a chance to go through all of these, if you've got any questions on this.
And some of those municipalities, I'm assuming, are also funded by property tax, not just all income tax.
Again, I, I don't know.
Right, I just, I'm just making that assumption, that they're not all, not all the same.
Anything else on this one? Next one, so this is just the pie chart comparing, you know, kind of who has what, in terms of reciprocity credit. This is a, a chart that kind of shows, and this is something that's been tracked. Shannon's here from the income tax side, and, you know, this is something that's been tracked for years. But, you know, there's information here, shows how many people are impacted by this. And I think, the way it was described to me was that, you know, it's, it looks on the bottom line like 2,600 people are affected, but that, that's actually not the case. If somebody works, and Shannon, maybe, help me out if I butcher this, or Kelly, the, you know, somebody could be counted multiple times. And, and that is because if they work outside, in, was it multiple jobs?
At multiple locations, like a construction worker, they would be counted, because we're, Shannon's tracking the actual dollar, and, but the people could be counted multiple times.
Yep. Yeah, so that's, that's the example, somebody that works in construction, works in multiple locations and pays in multiple jurisdictions. Each jurisdiction they work in, they have to file with us, and that, and that's counted each, each time, each one. So, the actual number could be, you know, as low as 2,000 to 2,100 people. Is that fair as a, as an estimate?
So in 2016, more than a quarter of the filers would be impacted by this. If we added this, we're, we have additional tax on 25% of the residents of the city of Napoleon, is that reading that right?
Based on this number, yes, but, again, if going back to
Right, understand.
That number would be lower, the, the actual count.
Because the software doesn't allow us to track the dollar amount and the people, because we have an older software system.
Okay.
So we are tracking the dollar amount, it's the most important thing, but the people could be counted multiple.
Okay. But you're sticking by the figures, it'll be the 400,000, is that what you're?
And the 400,000 is 2017, 16 and 15 average, so obviously, like anything else, when we do the estimates for the income tax, it could be higher or lower. But that's the best guess that we have at this point.
Okay. When we looked at this in the past, Greg Heath had come with those numbers, and I don't think 400,000, it seems high to me. And I tried to get back in the email, and I couldn't get back that far, so I gotta, I gotta figure that out. But, it just, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying, I don't remember it being that high.
That spreadsheet is the same every year, all I do is add the additional column.
Okay.
Figures, so, the spreadsheet you see
Yeah.
The same numbers he had last year for 16.
Okay, thank you. I just, again, I just don't remember it being that high.
Right.
And that's the spreadsheet that wasn't in this report, that's a different spreadsheet that I have, actually have it. This one?
Yes, and if you go to the third page.
Or is it the one in the packet?
No, it's that one, if you go to the third page.
Go to the third page.
You try to blow that up.
In large, not blow up.
Sorry. In large. Sorry. And if you look across the 50%, you can see it's 433, 358. I can't read any further, but it goes down to like 277.
I'm not disagreeing with the numbers, I just.
277, 263 in 2010. But that's 433 based on today's.
Correct.
And 2017.
And 17, because they're working.
That's what I'm thinking.
If you remember, in 17, didn't we have a higher collection rate because of the, that was the year we did the targeted enforcement for?
Yes, 17 is gonna be higher because of the motherboard basis.
Yep.
Yeah, my memory is more back in the 14, 13, 12, 11, 277 seems a lot more, that jogs me a whole lot closer than 400,000. I'm not saying the mother was wrong, I'm just saying that's, maybe that's how long ago it's been we looked at it.
We're getting after it, that's what.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have any numbers that show people paying tax here who don't live here? Like from Jack products and the jobs that have been created, how many of those people are now paying that weren't at, we didn't have before?
I don't know if that's tracked or not.
Could you hear?
I, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
How many people work in Napoleon, don't live in Napoleon, that were getting taxed on?
We have that number, I don't have it with me.
Okay.
But yeah, we do, we can get that number, yes.
Right, is that what you meant, Laurie?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how that compares. I don't know how that compares, just wondering.
So we're good on this sheet?
Can you go back to where we're showing the number of filers? And how many people would be affected?
This one?
Yeah. I missed a little bit at the beginning of that conversation. What is the difference between the number of filers and the number of people that are actually paying income tax?
The number of filers compared to, like, say, companies that already withhold income tax from employees?
No, if there is, maybe there's 16-year-old, 17-year-old, and they end up ultimately not owing anything, actually paying income tax. And does everyone have to file up to what age?
That 8,446, that's anyone that filed a return, that's how many actual returns that they can cross the counter.
Okay.
And they don't have to start filing until they're 18, unless tax is due, then they have to file if they're under 18.
So anyone that filed in that number, they did pay something to the city?
Not necessarily paid, some people do file a zero return. If you're 20 and you don't work anywhere, you're not on disability, you have to come in and file a zero tax return.
Okay.
And that would be included in the 8,000.
That's what I was trying to get at, is how many of those people of 8,446 actually didn't owe anything?
Lived in the city, lived in the city, didn't pay anything, yeah.
Right.
Because of zero tax liability.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't have that number, we took that number, too, you would want the one that's just a zero return, or someone that worked in the city, had it withheld, but still don't owe anything.
Yes.
Both. Since you said that, that'd be great.
Okay.
So those filers, those are also people that don't live in the city, but they work in Napoleon?
No, somebody doesn't live in the city and works in Napoleon, they don't have to file with us unless they owe a tax.
So these are just people that actually live in the city?
There could be somebody that lived in Liberty Center, but came in here and did some kind of service for us, and they're a Schedule C filer, then they would file.
Okay. Hard to figure out that. Because with 8,000, if we have approximately 8,200 or 8,400 residents, and we have 8,446 filers, that means, you know, sorry, Joel, look at you, you're a six-month-old or whatever, must be filing. I'm trying to figure out if it's not the people that don't live in town and work in town are filing. How we come up with that number and?
Well, yeah, the, you know, again, the number of filers, people can be counted multiple times, too. So, remember, that's the people working outside of the city in different jurisdictions, like a construction worker, and working in, you know, different jurisdictions, and each one has a count.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
That's.
So then when it says total impacted, it isn't the total number of people impacted, it's the total number of fires.
Counts.
Or counts.
Yeah.
So. What's counted, yeah, and that's the, the software thing, where it doesn't, we're only tracking dollar amounts, we're not tracking as much the number of actual people, and what was the?
We have to pick what way, it can be the dollar amount, which is the most important way, but it can't track both ways.
Yeah.
So if somebody had three different jobs in the city, that'd be three, would that also be three, or is it only?
No, if someone works for a construction company, they have one W-2, but they worked in five different cities, we have to enter that W-2 five times for the wages to Toledo, the wages to Liberty Center. So they're gonna be counted in there five times.
Okay.
In that number. So an estimate that I would say would be safer be, that's probably overestimated by 500, probably about 500 people, the extra numbers in there.
But for myself, I have a couple different jobs in the city, and I, would that be only one, even though I have three W-2s?
It would be one, because all your, like, all your Napoleon wages would be on one line.
Okay, thank you.
How long does a contractor have to work in the jurisdiction to have to?
That just changed.
20 days.
21 or 20? 21 or 20?
20, from 12. How long do you have to work?
From 12, that's right.
20 days, unless they're based in employee area.
I'm sorry, unless they're what?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
So I don't wanna step on anybody's toes here, but with an estimate of about 2,100 people here, living in the city, paying no city income tax, I think that point's being lost. We have 2,100-ish people who, yeah, they're paying, different municipalities, the income tax, but they live here, they receive services here, and they're not paying for any of it.
Correct.
My sentiments exactly.
And now, I see a lot of people that come in that have worked in Toledo, they think we get that money. They think Toledo sends us whatever they owe for them. And we obviously don't, but that is the consensus most people think, is that we do get that money.
How can we change that?
Very easily. Where's my part?
Call him up and-
This is Billy's input.
There it is, it's a full sentence. I gotta change those three ordinances. So, staffing issues for 14301, 14501, and then the percentage in 194.081. It's already written, it's ready to go. It was easy.
Hold on, my, sorry, my question was, how do we change that when people work in another city, that, that money can come back here?
Sorry, I liked my answer better.
Well, here's the ordinance, and, and change that 100 to 50 is what the suggestion is, and that's, that's about it, right?
Yeah.
It's my ordinance and-
That's it. All the other ordinances that reference the credit, simply reference the credit, they don't have a percentage. I don't have to go, I did look, obviously, but there isn't a 50, you know, 100% credit listed 20 times in there. It's, it's in this one ordinance, and then all the other ordinances reference this ordinance, that's the credit. So, the other two ordinances listed are simply staffing issues. So, move on, or?
Sure. You know, when doing an analysis for such a decision like this, you gotta look at what are your, all of your options. We talked about the Safer Grant, we talked about, you know, crash fees and things like that. And always the first thing that comes to mind is the do-nothing alternative. We don't feel that the do-nothing alternative is a good one. You know, I feel like I've kinda prolonged this myself for a couple of years at least, and trying to see where the, you know, is this number of calls issued going to level off or plateau, or even dip back down? And it just, it just keeps going up. You know, it's 12 years of call and volume going up. So, it's, we've got an increased number of housing units being built, and I know Chief, you've, you've raised some concerns about that. 49 units of strictly senior housing, you know, that's, that's significant. And again, the daytime population is, is increasing. We're, we're putting in new rooftops and more rooftops and more are planned, as you all know, coming up. So, it just, with, with that comes increased workload. So, that's, that's something hopefully we'll, you know, you would, you would want the amount of taxes to go up, that income tax, that's, you know, from construction and new businesses to go up. It's the, you know, it's the inflationary cost, and it's the revenues versus expenditures. You know, the increased cost for medical supplies for each run that you go on is going up higher than what normal inflationary rates are going. You know, I mean, there's, there's just, there's, there's a whole litany of factors that go into this. So, you know, other options could be, you know, a lower reciprocity income tax, and I just wanted to put that in there as a potential. But that would mean, you know, carving out the, the capital side and widening the gap between, you know, operating versus, versus capital. So, but, but I guess this, this solution was a, was, was thought of as a way to address, you know, essentially four issues in one, in one action, which is staffing levels at the fire department, staffing levels at dispatch, capital improvement issues, and then, you know, I, I bring up this point that, yes, when I first got hired on, there were two levies that were put on the ballot for roads. Now, they were both voted down, but both times, 45% of the population voted yes. So, it's 55 to 45. At least, it's a little something that goes back into the, the capital side for roads. And then lastly, whatever's remaining goes to the, the operating side to lessen the burden of the, you know, the revenues versus expenditures that we talked about in the budget. So, now, Billy alluded to this, but, you know, always, you know, you always want the voters to vote for, or at least have a chance to vote on something. You know, you know, increasing the income tax by a vote, only ask, you're only asking for the people that are already paying to pay for more, and then the people that live here but still get the service that aren't paying for it are still, you know, the same, it's still status quo. So, you know, that's, that, that thought process was put into this as well. You know, there was a lot of, there's a lot of thought that went into this. But I wanna end this with two different things. One, the two positions with the highest turnover rate in the city are firefighter and dispatcher. Those are the two positions with the highest turnover rate. So that's number one. Number two, you know, just that, you know, we've spent a considerable amount of time second guessing, second guessing even after the committee meeting. You know, because it is, it is a tough, tough decision and tough, you know, for everybody. It's a tough position to be in. So, I, I still believe that this is the, this is the best option. So with that, I kinda-
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
I spoke, I spoke in regards to how this affects my dispatch center and stuff, and we talked about this in committee briefly, but I just wanted to kinda bring it to the tensions that hasn't come up tonight. The support for what Chief O'Brien is doing. When I came on 25 years ago, as an officer, I ran to serious crashes, is what it boiled down to. I provided medical treatment when I was first unseen at a traffic crash. Other than that, I wasn't required or asked to do anything medically. Although I was certified in CPR and some general first aid, that's, that was pretty much what I did. If it was a fire, we helped with a hose occasionally. Other than that, we weren't required to do a whole lot. 25 years later, where I sit now, our department assistive went through the roof with fire because of their overlapping calls. We're now asking officers to be that first responder more in a medical situation more and more often. And not all the time is that, that might be just because they've got one person or two people on a squad, and we're helping get geared, because they can't even get a, you know, a cot out of the back of the squad because they're working on someone. That's not, we've been gracious to have that in most scenarios here, but that's not always gonna be there because I'm gonna be busy at times too. And waiting for those, those second and third calls to get extra help in are critical incidents and, are critical minutes that are lost for, for our citizens. The, the senior housing doesn't affect my department as much, other than my dispatch center. But it will affect our calls that we're helping them out with because of their staffing issues. It's something that routinely now on shift, my guys are responding to medical calls to assist their fire department because of the staffing issues that they're dealing with. And I just wanna kinda point that out with their staffing. It is, it's affecting our agency, but I'm more concerned about their staffing and getting the help, let cops do cop work type of thing. Thank you, sorry, I just wanted to add that piece.
Appreciate that.
I would like to add one last thing, just some closing remarks too. So when we talked about the overlapping calls, we tried to just point out, that's the, at the very minimum amount of people that we would need for those overlapping calls is four people. But there's a lot of times on these EMS calls, that's, that's suggesting that every one of those 450 calls is, is an actual overlapping EMS call. If that's an overlapping fire call, you could need 20 people. Yeah, we have Ridgeville that comes in, but every time we're on a fire, we'll see two and three EMS calls at that same time. So, I, I think that, as Joel said, that we have sat in his office, you know, going back over this and making sure that this is the right decision and making sure that this is the best thing. And the thing I think that's so much different about this one and how we got to that 50% was because we have something to point to. And what we have something to point to is that although that individual may be working outside the city of Napoleon, we're still protecting their property. We're still protecting their kids while they're at school. And the cops are still protecting it from if their door blows open or the ring goes off on their phone. So, we have something that we can really say that we're, it's, they're not, they're just paying for the service back at home. They're at work one-third of the time. They're at home two-thirds of the time. So, we're just, we're protecting them all the time, whether they're here or whether they're not. And we felt that at the end, that, that 50% was the, the most fair, to be able to capture all four of these things. So, I will like to say though, I have been working on this for two years, and, and I appreciate the fact that we've been able to make it this far. And so, I just, I really appreciate everybody listening and being here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we move ahead with this income tax credit.
This is gonna require, I think, at least three pieces of legislation. So if you would make that motion to direct the law director to draft all appropriate legislation.
We have a timer?
Yep. Thank you to the chiefs for this presentation. Of course, I'm, I agree with you. We need to increase the personnel. Being a former law enforcement, I'm, I'm pro-police and pro-fire department both. I see the need for it, I agree with what you're saying. I just don't agree with the funding that we're doing to accomplish that. I don't think it's anybody's fault that they're working out of town and they're, have to pay this tax. Is it fair? No. I pay my one and a half percent. I have two jobs in Napoleon as well, just like Joe does, and I just don't think this is fair to them. So, I'm, in the committee, I voted no, and I'm gonna vote no again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't mean I'm against what you're doing. I just think we gotta find another source for this, another funding source. Thanks, Joe.
And I, I share the feelings as Jeff does. I see a huge need, but I don't think this is the, in my opinion, the way I would like to, to see it happen. And I looked at a lot of the reports, and one thing that stuck out in my mind was looking at a city like Findlay. And Findlay has a 0% credit back. But the city of Findlay also have, they have multiple, large businesses, a lot, high-paying jobs there. And in my simple mind, simple thoughts, saying, if you don't wanna work in Findlay, where we have a lot of good jobs, good-paying jobs, and you decide to go somewhere else and work, then we're not gonna give you credit. I, I think our economy's getting better here in Napoleon, we're attracting more businesses. I don't think it's at the point where everyone can make the amount of money that they're used to making, working in town, and to, to force them to pay an additional amount. And, and some residents that called me the last week made it very clear that this may push them to, to leave Napoleon. And a lot of them were people that have, both of their incomes were from outside of Napoleon. So, when we look at these numbers, it may not only affect, if it's 2,000 people, it, it could be two in the same household. So now it's doubling the amount. So I think we, in my opinion, I would like to look for another way to fund this, because it's obviously needed. And I would like to see if there's an increase in any taxpayers' taxes that they have a voice, and if it was on a levy or something, that they could, could vote for it instead of me making that decision for them.
Yes.
Following up as chairman of the state help meal committee, we definitely have an issue with these increased calls. We definitely have a, a problem with staffing. And there is an issue with roads too. My number one concern though is with the fire department and is with the police department. Going back to that Safer Grant is not gonna work because that's gonna cost the city way too much money in the long run. My main concern right now is what I like to hear once the citizens have to say. Yes, very much. I'd like to hear more from the citizens. Because quite frankly, as I said in the committee meeting, I don't like any type of new tax, okay? And if we put it to the voters, I, I do agree with Billy, you know, it's, it's not gonna affect, it's not gonna change this situation on that. So, my, I guess my personal opinion is I would like to see what the community has to say, or the citizens have to say. I'm not in favor of new tax, but I would vote in favor of bringing this legislation up and hearing more information before I won't want to make a final decision. If, if that passes, that would be my opinion. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That's all I had to say.
I don't think anyone disputes what the two of you have said, and certainly we all respect the job that you do. And I think you're very conscientious in finding ways to support your departments, and I appreciate that. And I definitely think this needs to be a priority of council to figure out how we do fix that. At budget time though, we, we heard about the Safer Grant, and I feel like nothing more was said, and then boom. And I don't feel like in one week is enough time to decide, to make a, a decision like this for me. So, I, I would like more time to, to look at options, see what other opportunities there are to fund the, the things that you need, but not through this tonight.
Thank you.
I'll agree. I, I think the presentations that both you made just enhance the appreciation for all that you guys do, and the amount of overtime that the police force is putting in is incredible. So, thank you all for that. Chief O'Brien, I think that there's no doubt a need within the department, but I'm with Dan. I think we need to hear more from the citizens before we, we move forward. And like Lori said, we just need a little bit more time to gather details.
Well, all I'm asking for is for the city to do legislation right now. You don't have to vote on it tonight. I think we move forward with this right now. The citizens say no, then we say no. We're gonna do three votes. This isn't gonna be a rush-through job.
I guess I'll interrupt just to make sure we get the procedure right. I think you've made a motion at this point to direct the law director to draft legislation, the appropriate legislation in this instance, to bring forward all of this.
Yes.
So we've got a motion.
Great.
He already made his motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Jeffo?
No.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Jeff C.
Yes.
That failed. Failed, failed, failed for three, for three.
What, may I, Mr. President?
Yes.
What I'd like to see then is, I'd like to see this tabled for, under discussion till we can get more information, as both Councilman Durham and Councilman Sinclair have pointed out.
Did you wanna table it here, or did you wanna send it back to the committee for further-
I would like to table it here. I think this is something that needs to discuss by the whole, the whole council.
I agree, and I think that's part of our issue-
I agree, and I think that's part of our issue, who is not on the committee, and I know a lot of things have been talked about in that committee, and we've heard bits and pieces, and then, and then just in the last week, having a lot of information thrown at us, so I, I think it would be better to stay in council, so we all understand every aspect of it.
So Councilman Berry, are you making that motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'll second. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Fail. Fail, fail, four to three.
What, may I, Mr. President?
Yes.
What I'd like to see then is I'd like to see this tabled for, under discussion till we can get more information as both Councilman Durham and Councilman Sinclair have pointed out.
Did you want to table it here, or did you want to send it back to the committee for further?
I would like to table it here. I think this is something that needs to discuss by the whole, the whole council.
I agree, and I think that's part of our issue, who is not on the committee, and I know a lot of things have been talked about in that committee, and we've heard bits and pieces, and then, and then just in the last week, having a lot of information thrown at us, so I, I think it would be better to stay in council, so we all understand every aspect of it.
So Councilman Berry, are you making that motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'll second. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
In my mind, there's, there's six questions that I got to have answers to. One is the six dispatcher versus the current overtime we're paying for dispatch. Two, you showed us the amount of firefighters we have versus other jurisdictions, I just need more time for that, it's not really questioned. But how much, what was the maximum income we receive from non-emergency runs? That'd be nice to have, right? So now we're starting, so then it becomes, is fifty percent too much, is twenty-five percent enough to still do what we want to do? I'd like to know the total tax, income plus the property tax. I know there's a lot of municipalities on there, I don't need it for every one of them, but ones that are kind of like ours would be kind of nice. And then, the fifty percent reciprocity is showing in very good economic times, where was it, five, six, seven years ago when times weren't quite as good? I don't want to hit this and come back and go, we, we don't get enough, you know what I mean, I don't want to hit. If we're going to do this, we got to do it one time, not nibble, nibble, nibble. It's got to be one, one good time. So those are the questions I would like answered, I know we talked about them, but that's just the way I list them. And I agree with everybody else, what everybody else is saying, the need is there, we just got to figure out how to get paid for, because the need is there. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. Have any other comments or questions from anyone?
Thank you for coming tonight, everybody in the room, we really appreciate you.
Moving on to item J four is a discussion or action to direct the law director to draft legislation for an ODOT to repair the US six and state route twenty-four Scott Street overpass. Joel?
There was damage done to one of the overpasses due to the, an accident, and I believe it was a hit skip, right Chad? So, in order to do work in the city limits, they need legislation to, to do that. When are they scheduling it? Just some, in June? Okay.
This is not a cost to the city, it's just allowing ODOT to actually do the work inside the city limits?
Correct. Unless, unless there's an opportunity for something and we say, hey, you know, while they're here, while they're there, do we need to fix this? And, you know, we could shore something up. But, you know, we got a big project coming up in the, in the coming years.
Right. Good. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes. Moving on to item J five, discussion or action, approval of the December two thousand and nineteen replacement pages to the codified ordinances. What, anything in particular that?
This is, correct me if I'm wrong, Rox, but this is the Walter Grain Company review that they do twice a year.
Okay. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll definitely take a look at it.
I'll keep you in mind.
Okay.
Laurie?
I have nothing.
Dan?
The only thing I have is a question. It is the time of year where it's tax season now, and all of us here have to do the annual financial disclosure statement. And my question is, is the city going to continue to provide those forms for us and send them all in as a group? And if so, once a deadline? And if not, are we doing it online? Does anybody know?
Didn't you get yours already? I, I gave mine tonight to her.
I, all I've got is something, an email, they print it off from the state.
You didn't get something in your packet?
You don't do a paper packet.
Oh-oh.
Nope.
That was in the packet about two weeks ago. You can do it online, or if you give it to me, we'll send it in as a group.
You can still do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess my next question is, how do I print that off without printing off all two hundred and some pages? Because the last time I tried, that's what I got.
I'll give you a half.
Thank you. That's a old man technology problem, sorry for that.
That's all, sir. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
The Napoleon High School girls won the basketball in the Northern Lakes League for the first time, congratulations to them. The girls and boys bowling team both won the Northern Lakes League, congratulations to them. Commissioner Tom Von Neil is wrapping up his time, and I think he'll be out of office by the time we meet again, so wish him congratulations and the happiest of retirements. And Kelly, you probably know this already, but a majority of the finance and budget committee is going to be gone the fourth week of February, so if you want to have a meeting, we can't probably do it then. So if we got to adjust, we got to adjust. If we're not going to have it, then we're not going to have it.
We don't need one for February.
That's fine. I just don't want you to, to say next, you know, next council, hey, we have a meeting. No, 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 we're not, so, okay. Thank you very much, that's it.
Just an echo on your first two items there, congrats to the Lady Cats basketball team and the bowling team, that's all I have.
Awesome. Ken?
Don't forget the Fireman's Breakfast is coming Sunday.
All right.
That's it.
Jeff asked about a month ago about who has access to use Walmart on the bills. I don't know if we ever got an answer to that.
Do I have to come up here and get a credit card?
Okay.
That's all I have. Billy?
Nothing.
Joel?
Rox has council, city council training items, if anybody's interested in signing up for them, and got a few courses that are coming up. I think- Rox, did you email that out to everybody in a packet at one point? You did? Okay.
I'll resend it.
We'll resend it out. I'm not sure you have it. Also, going to request executive session for acquisition or sale of property, and one executive session for water contract, or I'm sorry, for items to remain confidential that are real-
Related to-
Related to the competitive nature of the utility.
Perfect.
That's pretty good.
Might as well drop the confidential part.
Which utility, yeah.
I can see utilities initials, Bruce.
That's it.
Great.
Don't play poker with him.
Don't play poker with him.
Yeah, I had the same thing with the Napoleon girls basketball and both of the bowling teams, it's very exciting times. Good luck to both of them to go further, and hopefully we have some state champs here soon. All right, could I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
You can have a motion to go into executive session for acquisition, and did you say purchase of property?
Acquisition or sale of property.
Sale. Okay.
Motion?
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
You can have a motion to go into executive session, I'm going to ask Billy to repeat that one, please.
Let me get the wording.
For the third topic.
Not doing it. Get the wording. Items to remain confidential due to the competitive nature of the utility.
Perfect.
Perfect. Nothing to do with water, don't worry.
Got a motion?
So moved.
Second. Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
And can I have a motion come out of the executive session for acquisition or sale of property?
Motion?
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
And can I have a motion come out of the executive session for something I didn't write down that whole long?
I missed to remain confidential due to the competitive nature of the utility.
Nice.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff Don?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Jeff C.
And can I have a motion come out of the executive session for something I didn't write down that whole long?
I missed to remain confidential due to the competitive nature of the utility.[1783.71]